Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' meeting.
This is the March 5th, 2018, meeting of the Alamance County Commissioners, and we are all here. Come to order, please. And this morning Commissioner Byrd has our invocation and will lead us in the fledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everybody. In recognition of the wide diversity of faiths that we have in our community, I'd like to offer a moment of silence. And as we do, I'd like you to remember a few things: why we are here, so that this body can collectively lead and govern our county in a manner that is best for our community. Please remember the victims and survivors of human trafficking, domestic violence, and sexual assault; those that are suffering from other forms of oppression, enslavement, abuse, crime, homelessness, and social injustices; those that are suffering from mental and physical illnesses, substance use disorders, and the challenges of aging; and please remember our county staff who carry out the important and very diverse work of county government every day, often in the face of many challenges. So let's have that moment of silence. Thank you.
Coach Stanton will say the punch.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this morning we have one public speaker signed up. Before we get to that, I want to take a moment to review our public comment policy and the rules that the Commissioners adopted for decorum of the audience, especially, you know, we didn't, I've been going over these since I became Chair in December, not in anticipation of or in reaction to anything which has happened or might happen. But I will point out that next meeting is March 19th, and we will be having a presentation by the Alamance Burlington School System and the Alamance Community College about their bond proposals. And so this public comment policy will apply on March 19th as it has at all the others. So, and this is the policy which is adopted, was revised, adopted as revised in September of 2014. The comment period shall be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. The Alamance County Board of Commissioners shall have a Commissioners' response period immediately following the public comment period. This will be a point of response from Commissioners to respond to comments that have been made, not debates with the public. Each person desiring to speak during the public comment period shall have three minutes to make his or her remarks. There shall be no more than three speakers on any one topic per meeting. It is recommended that speakers desiring to speak on the same topic and advocating the same position choose one person to speak for all. And then there's other things that should go without saying, like speakers should not refuse profanity or racial slurs. So the public comment policy is available for the public to review on our county website, and I would recommend that people do that. Then, and also, of course, if anybody wants to come and speak before the Board, if you have some kind of condition which limits your mobility or your ability to communicate in some kind of way, if you'll let us be aware of that through contacting county staff, we would be delighted to try to make whatever accommodation we can for you. In the rules which were adopted by the County Commissioners sometime last year, decorum of the audience, in order to efficiently transact public business, is necessary that the members of the audience demonstrate an appropriate decorum and respect for the Board and speakers. And then this is in Section 7 of Article 6. It goes forward to say some things about what that means to have appropriate decorum. So I would ask the public to review those things before coming to any meeting prospectively. So, that being said, we have one person signed up to speak, and those remarks had absolutely nothing to do with this person signing up and are not intended to be broadcasting some kind of opinion about what he's going to say. So, Mr. Gordon Kidd, if you would come forward and tell us your
(Inaudible).
Come on up.
Thank you for your time. My name's Gordon Kidd. I live in Snow Camp. Very relatively close to the horror show, the Hollywood Horror Show, as it's called. It sounds like cannons going off there sometimes. This is not just now and again. This guy runs this thing from late September to beginning of November. And it's like Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and during Halloween, it's the whole week. It's just totally unfair to the people around. If I recorded it and played it at your house during the hours that he's doing this show, you certainly won't like it. As hollering, screaming, loud music, screams. Like I said, it sounds like howitzers going off there sometimes. It's very unfortunate that it's come to this, but I've asked the Sheriff's Department to check into it, and they've gone, and they've said that there's not much they can do at all. I tried to confront the guy, Jones, his name is, I think. He told him to get off his property because he didn't want to hear it. And he said, I said, "Well, the Sheriff's Department will be out." He said, "Well, the Sheriff's Department, they'll take care of us." You know, no reflection on the Sheriff's Department, he said that. So, that being said, they keep referring me back. Even the desk sergeant that was there at the time when I called in to the station, he said, "Well, according to the ordinance, they're doing it legally. It's theirs." He doesn't go all the way down to the end of the ordinance where it is a discomfort for the surrounding citizens. It doesn't go that far. Nobody will pick up on that and stop it because of not, you know, they're going by what's in the main body of it, of the ordinance. It's not, it's not nice. Something should be done. If there's anything I can do, you know, as far as being able to put a stop to it, keep the hours down, the noise down, let me know because I'll be happy to do my part if I have to. But please, take another look at this and look at the last part of the ordinance where it concerns the surrounding citizens and their right to have peace and quiet on the weekends. Thank you.
Wait a minute. What time does he stop the noise?
Well, he's, he's pretty well within the hours of limited, 11, 12 o'clock. 12 o'clock, I think.
Our ordinance says 10 o'clock.
Well, Sundays is 10. I think Friday and Saturday, I think is 11 is what I read.
Well, our ordinance says 10. It should be 10.
Well, that's.
Is that not correct?
I'll double-check that.
Anything after 10 o'clock, you can shut them down?
I think that's correct, but I'd like to.
That's what the ordinance says. I remember it. I don't remember much, but I remember that.
Well, I did take a cursory glance over it. I thought he was okay. They told me he was okay till 11 o'clock. Fridays and Saturdays, it's 10 o'clock. That was for Sunday. You know, that was pretty well agreed upon. But still, even then, the noise level is just so high. If you go there, you'll turn it down as soon as they take off, turn the volume back up again, and back to square one on it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Do we have any Commissioners' responses to that?
I think we need to look at the ordinance, and if it needs a little tweaking, we're going to do it.
I agree 100 percent. I think that we need to look at the, what does the ordinance say? Are we enforcing the ordinance we have? If not, then let's enforce our ordinance. And if we need to change the ordinance, then let's take a look at that to preserve the quality of life in the country. And that's a very important thing. And we're going to see more and more of that because we've got so many people moving to the country who've never lived there before and don't understand. We have right, we have duties to our neighbors. Chair?
We try to enforce the ordinance. There really does need to be something done improving that ordinance. Because for us, you know, in certain situations.
There's not much you can do if.
Exactly, exactly. We respond. We try to follow the ordinance, but the ordinance is, it needs to be something done.
It's too open-ended, is what it is. The ordinance itself is open-ended somewhat without specifics.
Yes, sir.
So the deskfuls and such.
Yes, sir.
That's true. We can improve on all of that. It also, you know, somebody can call the law. The Sheriff's Department comes out there, they turn it down. 30 minutes later, they turn it right back up. And how do you prove it or go about it? It'd be very nice if people would be considerate of one another and think about things. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Well, if you do anything, it needs to parallel what you're doing at A Speedway.
Right.
That's why I think we're.
I think we're on to that.
Friday and Saturday.
The A Speedway folks, that is a situation right there, for sure.
And there's the Whirling Gig Project down in Saksbaha, too, that people talk to me about, the threat of it.
Quite so. All right. So if there's no other responses, if you have all had a chance to review the agenda, then we could have a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll move second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So what about the consent agenda? If everyone's had time to review the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Now, selection of our representation for opioid litigation. First, I want to mention a couple of things. I had another conversation with Mr. Albright this morning about whether or not we should go into closed session to hire an attorney because it just doesn't sit right with me. It feels weird to talk about people in front of them. It feels disrespectful and like it would be a quashing of discussion. But in consultation with Mr. Albright and also myself reviewing the statute, I see that no clear exception to the open meeting statute applies. And so since there's no clear exception applying, then it's an open meeting. So we will be proceeding with this open session after thinking about it a lot. And then the second thing I want to do is reiterate that I have worked for one of the law firms that is presented, but I have not worked for that law firm in two and a half years and don't intend to go back to working them anymore. This small county, a small town, and lots of people work for a lot of people or belong to clubs where people belong or know one another in different ways. So I have no direct financial benefit from participating in this decision, and therefore I have a duty to vote, and I will vote. So, we have heard the presentations from the three different law firms which are competing for our business, so now I'll just open it up for discussion.
I think Clyde wants to speak first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Albright, of course.
Yes, we want to make a slight comment on this. I have, we've heard from all the law firms, as you mentioned. And they're all good firms. They all know their way around a federal courtroom. So I think the main thing to consider in this exercise is the only thing we can control at this time is the amount of fee we're going to pay the law firm. So I would suggest to you that that would be the determining factor in selecting a law firm. And we've heard from all of them. We've gotten their fee proposals. And I sent you a memo, attorney-client memo, last week that laid all that out. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions if you have any.
Well, I'm not going fibbed to you. I didn't see that. You know, when we talked, I thought the fees were percentages of what was received, and that was it. Is there separate fees involved?
Well, they're expenses.
Or expenses.
In addition to fees, and that's in their proposals. And the Painter Firm sent an amendment to their proposal, and I incorporated that into the memo.
Okay. So if this, I don't know why all this stuff comes way after the fact. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
It gets confusing, and it's very difficult to weigh each of the firms because they all present lots of strengths. And so I'll just comment that I think it's the, I have to look, I can't remember the names. The Barron &amp; Budd Firm is willing to cap their expenses so that the combined expenses plus fees would be no more than 50 percent of the damages that we would collect it.
That's correct.
If we were able to collect damages. On the other hand, the Painter Firm was willing to negotiate the percent of the damages related to their fees. And that percentage gets applied to the damages after the expenses are deducted. So, and then they're also willing to reinvest a third of their fees back into this community. And there's some, and then you pointed out a lot of, well, and then I'll say that the, so I don't leave anybody out. The Kruger Dickinson Firm, I mean, their experience, and they have just a huge team and have a lot of national recognition, so that speaks highly, too. But as you pointed out, there are a lot of other risks associated with moving forward that we all need to be mindful of because what happens, say, the settlement discussions that are taking place in Cuyahoga County, Ohio, right now, don't resolve in anything, and then it goes back to, yeah, it goes to trial. And there's always a risk when something goes to trial that we might lose. And if we lose, we might be charged with the defendant's legal fees and expenses, and so, I mean, there's, I don't know how serious that risk is if you put a probability of that scenario happening.
Well, that is always a possibility.
And then how do the firms stack up against that kind of a scenario with respect to?
Well, really, that would turn on the facts of our case if we filed a complaint and we were not able to survive summary judgment. If the court decided we didn't have enough facts to back that up, it could dismiss it.
So each firm, each firm does provide a relatively local law firm to represent them. Painter is local there in Hillsborough.
They are.
So Barron &amp; Budd would have Mr. Daniel locally, and then Kruger and Dickinson would have.
Janet Ward Black. Janet Ward Black.
Yes, Janet Ward Black. So it's, there's so many things to consider. I don't know how we go about making that decision.
Well, in a lawsuit, you can't guarantee results. No attorney is going to guarantee what's going to happen in a lawsuit. But from what I've seen of our records thus far, it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of expense on our part to garner enough facts to prove our case.
But let me ask you, is the Painter Firm guaranteeing maximum fee, expenses?
The Painter Firm is going to advance the expenses.
And don't they all do that?
Yes, they all do that. But the thing with the Painter Firm, they have a tiered settlement proposal. And they would agree to a 10 percent settlement reached, if settlement is reached prior to any pre-trial order, they would take 10 percent of that settlement.
Which makes sense because it'd be less onerous on their part to get to that point.
On their part and ours, as well. If a settlement is obtained prior, 90 days before the trial, it's 20 percent. But if the settlement or judgment is obtained within that 90-day timeframe, they're having to prepare for trial. So they have arrived at a 30 percent settlement in that case. If it settles within that 90-day window.
Is it all three firms? Is that what you're saying?
No, this is just, this is just the Painter Firm. The Kruger Dickinson Firm did not agree, excuse me, to a cap on their expenses, nor would they reimburse the county for any costs that we incur. And they have a flat 25 percent fee. The Barron &amp; Budd, Barron &amp; Budd Firm agreed to cap expenses and litigation fees to 50 percent. And they would make a motion for our costs if a motion was appropriate. And we just don't know at this stage whether that would happen.
Now, as I recall, the Painter Firm also considers the time that our staff puts into this as a fee that would be reimbursed back to us.
Yes, they would allow us to, they would allow us to keep track of our time and to submit that as an expense.
Now, is the other two firms doing that as well, or is that just?
The only other firm that agreed to do that was the Barron &amp; Budd Firm in a motion at the appropriate time. But that depends on the trial judge, whether they're going to allow that.
So in my experience, where I used to work, and we were, our board would be faced, and I wasn't on the board, I was part of management, but we would sift all the pros and cons ourselves and then make a recommendation to the board. And I would ask if you have a recommendation, because you're, I mean, other than Amy, you're, we're just laypeople. We're not legal professionals. And you would be the one that would be working closely with whatever firm that we chose.
Well, as I said before, I'm comfortable with the ability of the Barron &amp; Budd and Kruger Dickinson and Painter Law Firm. I've looked at their past history, and I know Janet Ward Black and her capabilities. But I would say the only thing in our control right now is the fee paid to the plaintiff's attorney. And if you want to maximize the recovery to the county, that should be a consideration.
And that would be Painter?
Yes, they would give you the best return in that tiered proposal. Any other questions?
Could we maybe ask them to clarify anything, Clyde, say?
Sure.
Briefly.
Sir, if you would like to introduce yourself to the Board, and if you have something, come forward, introduce yourself to the Board. And I certainly, one thing I don't want to do is rehash what we did the last meeting and go through everything again. The Board has been given a lot of information, and I don't want to have an invitation to all the attorneys at home and plead their case once more. But if you have something to address, what Mr. Albright has specifically said.
Or any other questions that we had.
Or addressing the question.
Absolutely. And any additional questions? My name's Mike Fuller, with McQ Fuller. I'm with the Barron &amp; Budd Group and one of the National Counsel. I also hold one of the leadership positions in the MDL. And as Mr. Albright mentioned, we were at one point capping our total fee and expenses at 50 percent, much like we used to be at a 30 percent fee. We've reduced that. We've also reduced our cap. We're now capping fees and expenses at 35 percent. So we're guaranteeing the county a 65 percent recovery of whatever we bring in. To answer your question about the county being held for defense attorney fees and expenses, there's two causes of action that we generally bring in North Carolina that would allow or that create that mechanism if we're not successful. I've had certain counties in the state, as we represent 25 other counties, opt out of bringing those two claims. And if you don't bring those two claims, then there's no statutory provision for the defendants to come back for fees and expenses.
In other words, if we lose at the, in Ohio, with respect to a settlement, then we don't have to move forward filing a complaint, is that what you're saying?
No, sir. So say we file the complaint, and we're litigating, and we lose the case. In our general complaint in North Carolina, we bring a punitive damages claim. Well, in North Carolina, your statute says that if a punitive damage claim is found to be frivolous or baseless, that the defendants can then move against the plaintiffs to recover their fees and expenses. And I think that's what you were asking about earlier.
Yeah, I think.
I've had two counties that have opted out and dropped those, because what we'll do is we'll provide a complaint and provide it to you guys, particularly Mr. Albright, so he can look at it and advise you as to whether we should file it and what claims should be filed. And I've had two counties that have opted out of those, those two particular counts. So then there's no statutory basis for the defendants to come back on the county for fees, if we're unsuccessful. Now, knock on wood, we won't be unsuccessful, but yes, sir.
And that would be a discussion to be had in closed session because that would be after we've engaged you all as our attorney.
And that'd be legal advice.
And then we'd be talking about legal.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So I just wanted to bring that up, that further reduction on our caps as far as fees and expenses and answer any other.
35 percent, you say?
Yes, sir. The fee goes down to 25, and then we're basically capping expenses at 10. And the benefit that you guys get is that we represent over, I think, almost 350 entities nationwide.
And a lot of them in North Carolina.
25 in North Carolina. And our general expenses, for example, any experts that would be applicable to the entire group, you would get the economies of scale because those expert fees would be spread across all of our clients. So if you have just one client, for example, the client's going to have a lot more expenses because it doesn't have the ability to get economies of scale.
That's a great point.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Anybody else have any questions before I sit back down?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Albright. You're our county attorney.
Yes, sir.
In my opinion, thus the attorney for the county of Alamance. I want your recommendation for which one we should go with in relation to the probability that we know exists or can assume exists for success and/or the downside of expenses, everything in a mix.
All right. I would recommend the Painter Firm based on what I know today.
I make that recommendation motion, and we go with that.
Well, I want to ask a question. So I, so I came into this thinking that the Barron &amp; Budd was capping at 50 percent. Now it's 35 percent.
Well, that's, that has changed. That has been changed. I found out just a few minutes ago.
Okay, so that doesn't change your recommendation because it seems like now that.
Well, if it settles before trial, the Painter Firm's fee is 10 percent. And that's what we're, and I think everyone is anticipating that, but no one knows for sure if that will happen.
And expenses, but it's 10 percent professional fee, but there's going to be expenses on top of that, which could be, without the economies of scale, it could be higher.
One law firm looking at everybody, it's going to be less than 10.
Well, all five look. Our costs are going to be what they're going to be, no matter what firm they go to. We're going to have to do some digging. We're going to have to spend a lot of money.
But we're going to be reimbursing the law firm for their expenses in addition to the professional fee.
That's the catch. That's out of our pocket.
Well, yes.
So maybe we should have, ask Mr. Painter to come up and explain.
Sure, he's here.
Yes, he is.
Yes, sure. Good enough. Yes, the proposal was the expenses would be reimbursed off the top. If there's a settlement, the expenses are going to be, you know, minimal. I mean, the big expenses are when you're, have you retained your experts and are preparing for trial. And so the expenses would come off the top, and then the percentage, the fee percentage, is applied to the number once the expenses are subtracted. So you're not, you don't get a situation where you're applying the fee percentage to the entire total because that would not be fair to the county. And, you know, I'm happy to cap expenses to the extent that's ethically permissible. I mean, there are some issues with advancing expenses for a client, basically paying expenses for a client and not getting reimbursed. But certainly if there's a settlement, you know, I don't think the expenses are going to be large. And, you know, in any case, if it were litigated, of course, you can always move to recoup your costs and expenses under some of the statutes you might be suing under. Any other questions?
I'll second Tim's motion.
Do you have any comments?
Well, what he mentioned with the economy of scales, we have four counties surrounding us. And I think what will happen, and if it comes back to local level, you've already got the same depositions, I'm thinking, from the various counties. If they've got the four counties around us.
I think it's more than that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's all of them around us.
Right.
It's, uh.
Barron &amp; Budd seems to have a.
Rockingham, Chatham.
Upper Hand.
Castle, Person, Orange, Guilford, Randolph. It's all of them.
Yeah, and to answer your question, any type of complex litigation like this, the court is going to force coordination, so you're not going to be duplicating a lot of these expenses whether or not you're represented by the same attorneys. There's going to be an order making that an efficient process. And as part of the pre-trial motion, the leadership in the MDL is going to be doing some of the pre-trial work on behalf of anyone who's in the MDL.
Thank you. You may sit down. I would say that with all due respect, I'm sure you're a fine attorney, nice man and everything, but it seems like to me that they're offering, this is a business, and that they're offering a discount because they don't have anybody else in North Carolina that has signed on with them. That they're looking to get their foot in the door on the litigation. Fine, that's what people do. But I'm not sure that, I think that it's reasonable to say that we're getting a discount on price because they have less to offer. That they don't have, there's three attorneys who are the lead attorneys for the entire thing who have the ear of the judge. And the Dickinson Group has one of those three spots, and the Budd Group has one of those spots. The Painter Firm does not have one of those spots. The Painter Firm does not have one of those spots. The other of the three is the Motley Rice Law Firm that we've not heard from, from And if, I think it's a good point about the cost of the expert witnesses, if we have to hire expert witnesses, if it does, and Mr. Albright has been very pessimistic about this case settling. He has talked extensively about the cost of litigation, about the cost of depositions and interrogatories and other discovery tools and how expensive they are. We would be on the hook for all the expert witness fees unless another attorney, unless another county in North Carolina or in the region joins with the same group. If we go with the Dickinson Group, then we're sharing with Mecklenburg County, Alamance County and Mecklenburg County, and I think they have one other county. If I may ask, Ms. Black, what's the third county?
Caveras and also Representative Morris hired us for Cleveland this week.
So, we would be one of four counties?
Yes, ma'am, or, you know, depending on how any kind of allocation is, if it's by population, that would be about 1.2 million people.
Great. So, but we would be sharing with all the counties that surround us. We got a donut around us with a hole in the middle, and we're the hole. And I think that it's also important that we have a person with the Budd Firm who knows the difference between Eli Whitney and Sam Camp. He knows how to spell Saxmo-Haw.
And pronunciate.
Which a lot of people, yeah, start with that. You can tell he knows the difference between Alphamah and Ospey, which one's on which side of 87. I feel like he knows us, he knows our people, he knows, he has a heart for our people, a genuine heart, and that's not a reflection on any of the other attorneys, I'm sure they're nice people. So, that is why I would not vote for a motion to hire the Painter Law Group.
What's fun on me, you told me yesterday who you were going to vote for, forgive me.
I did.
You sure did.
I did.
Yeah, and your first sentence was, it's obvious who I'm going to vote for.
Yes, it is.
Okay, because you work for him.
No, sir, I, I...
That was, that was the tone of the conversation, forgive me, I'll debate you, the cows come home. And I know it's not a legal, I know it's not a legal conflict of interest, but it's a moral conflict of interest. Now, in my opinion.
Mr. Sutton, you're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you, and I certainly express it. I, Craig, would you counter her opinion about why Painter is weaker in her eyes than yours?
Well, I think the Painter Firm, I've just met them, but I've read what they've done, and they know their way around a federal courtroom, as do the other firms. They're obviously good trial lawyers. The thing I like about Painter, and as I said, the only thing we can control at this point in this litigation is the amount of fee we're going to have to pay. And having been in federal court once or twice, I know that the federal judge controls all of this. And there'll be limits on discovery, there'll be limits on the amount of depositions, limits on interrogatories.
Correct.
And as far as experts go, if we get to the stage where we're going to have to have a trial, all these trials are going to be sent back to the local federal district courts. So, if there's no settlement, Mecklenburg will be trying in the Western District, we'll be trying our case in the Middle District, and...
And where are Guilford and Orange and all those?
Uh, they'll be in the, Orange will be in the Eastern District, I'm not sure where the line is.
And Guilford?
But I know, I know we are in, the district that we're in, we're going to either be in Greensboro or Winston-Salem.
With?
With either Judge Tilly, or Judge Osteen, or Judge Eagles, or Judge Schroder. And I know those judges, having had some experience recently with them.
I'd check like a fly.
Share, appreciate your training.
As I look at this share. But those are, those are the issues I think we should focus on. What's in it, what's the best recovery we can get at this stage? So, if the case does settle, and as I mentioned in my, in my email to you, it would seem that Warren Buffett doesn't think this is much of a problem. He purchased $358 million worth of Teva stock recently. That's one of the pharmaceutical companies that's being, is a defendant in this case, so.
But did he purchase them out of dis...
Well, he doesn't see it as a problem, and from what I know about him, I don't know anything other than what I read about Warren Buffett, but from what I know about him, he weighs all these things.
We don't have a way to know if he's already sold that stock, do we?
That's right.
Well, he's, it's 1 percent of Teva, and he usually buys 9.9999 percent, so he doesn't have to report to the SEC. But that's another, that's another...
So, he's not that confident?
No, nobody can guess.
I have another question. You had mentioned to me about possibly this, if that settlement fails, that it may end up going to, at the state levels across the country. So, it could be our state bringing suit.
It could be. It could be that our attorney generals will all decide to get together and form their own group.
Or consortium of states.
And sue, which I would prefer that they do, since we have 150,000 people in our county, and other counties across this country have millions of people. And if they structure a settlement based on that, I'm just afraid that the state, the state would probably be better able to handle it and then distribute the proceeds.
So, would that impact our decision here if that happened?
Well, I don't know what the federal court will do. He may, he may send it back if all the attorney generals file a lawsuit. I'm not sure what judge, the judge is going to do in that case. But they could file on behalf of the states, so.
And Mr. Painter, were you going to?
I think, you know, it would be appropriate to discuss with whoever you retain in the closed session, but I think that's a very key issue in the case is, what is the North Carolina Attorney General going to do, and what is that impact going to be on the county and on the county's, on the county's claims? And that should be step one is figuring that out and discussing that.
Mike Fuller again, and just to add to your question, I've met with General Stein several times already. I've met with multiple attorney generals from other states. The Baron Budd Group has Burton LeBlanc, who's been assigned by the MDL as liaison counsel to all the attorney generals. So, we actually also represent the state of New Mexico. In my conversations with General Stein, Attorney General Josh Stein, there is, there is a difference between the state's claim and the county's claim. If you go back to Big Tobacco, for example, that didn't necessarily work out well for all the counties across the state. So, there are different damages, there are state-based damages, and there are county-based damages. There's got things that you guys pay for that aren't paid for by the state. So, your claims are different. So, even if Attorney General Josh Stein does file suit, which in my meetings with him, I have encouraged him to do and to hire us as well, right now, he's still sitting on the sideline. There was a, and Mr. Albright mentioned a coalition of AGs, there's been two coalitions. There's a coalition of litigating AGs, which about eight or nine have filed suit across the country, and there's about 30 AGs in a non-litigating coalition, which that is now starting to fall apart. The leader behind that was Pam Bondi in Florida, and then Josh Stein was on the executive committee for that non-litigating AG. Attorney General Bondi in Florida has issued an RFP, seeking outside counsel to bring litigation. So, I think what we're going to see is because the settlement conversations are breaking down, that the non-litigators are going to jump in and litigate. That's just my opinion. Any other questions? Thanks.
I don't know, somebody else stimulates my, another one.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Before we get to the vote, I just want to address what Mr. Sutton had said, and I want to say that I'd rather resent an implication that I would put a personal thoughts or history above my duty as an elected official to do what's right for the county. If I didn't think that the Budd Law Group was the best for the county, I would not take the stance that I've taken. And I do believe that sincerely. I have read the materials which have been furnished to us by the different groups, I've read them. I was interested in the transcript of the discussion with the judge in Ohio, so I've read the materials, I also did research on the internet. My opinion is not merely based on one person or one thing.
Not merely? I will, that leaves an open door. My understanding of linguistics, but you told me yesterday, and I'm sorry this is getting to be aired out, but there again, I'm not holding, I don't hold anything back in my head, man, I, you know, I might not live past tomorrow. You told me yesterday, you said it's obvious, I think the sentence was, it was the first sentence, basically, as to your thought, it was obvious who you were going to vote for. And then you kind of chuckled, and then you went into talking about the credit, the qualifications of the firm versus the firm that I said I was going to support. I was going to support the Wisconsin Group, clearly. And then it is such a dang toss-up now, with information flying at the last minute, which I resent. I have to go back to my county attorney, because I'm certainly not an attorney, I don't have the legal expertise nor ability to analyze it from that standpoint, and I have to go to my county attorney. How long have you been our county attorney?
So, we've had 12 years.
And how long have you been an attorney? Boy, he looks old to me. He's got pretty many.
Thirty, 35 years, 35 years.
So, I have to go back to the camp of qualifications as to who I'm going to rely on as a, as a person who votes, you know, this position is to give me my advice. So, I'm taking it, and if it doesn't pass, we'll go to the second round, the second vote. But I don't back off of anything that I said this morning, and I mean it. There are certain things you don't do, even if you're covered by legal parameters, in my opinion. I couldn't have, I just couldn't, I couldn't vote with that track record. You don't agree, I don't agree, so, you know, it's a stalemate. But, and I think it's a slam, to be quite honest about it, only attorney that is, that we are considering is if they're playing lost leader here. But anyway, motion's out there, the second's made, I, can I call for the vote?
Well, I would like to say that that's why I regret that we have to do this in a closed session, because I don't want to slam anybody, I don't want it to feel like that.
Well, I think it's good that we got it all out on the table, in public eye.
And somewhat, in looking at this, I'm sure Mr. Painter's a great lawyer, he's a one-man show. This is a big issue, and I learned a long time ago, being in business, you've got an issue going to court, you hire the best bulldog you can find. That's just something I learned in my history in business. And I have no objections to him, but sometime you need the power of a larger firm to help you. And that's why I thought Baron and Budd might be our better choice, but we'll see.
All right, we have a motion in a second to hire the Painter Law Group to represent the Alamance County in the opioid litigation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So, that motion fails two to three.
And I will make a motion that we move with Baron and Budd.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of hiring the Budd Law Group to represent Alamance County in the opioid litigation, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So, that motion carries by a vote of four to one. So, thank you very much for coming, Mr. Painter and Ms. Black, we wish you well, and look forward to seeing you sometime in the future. All right, the next item on our agenda, I guess we will go into closed session to discuss our legal strategy with the Budd Law Group, shall we?
We've got a budget.
Let me ask about the, shall we, yeah, we have one more thing on our, on our agenda that's a budget amendment by the Board of Elections. Oh, yeah, I see, the closed session is down here. So, someone from the Board of Elections here to present your budget amendment.
If not, I present it. You have before you a request by the Board of Elections to make use of $23,647 from their Performance Management Bank. They are wanting to replace a vehicle that was destroyed, they had a Crown Vic that was parked on the corner in front of the Board of Elections office. Someone crashed right there and wound up glancing off and hitting the Crown Vic and totaled it. They're asking to be able to use these funds to purchase a van that they will be able to use to take voting equipment around the county and the supplies that they need to take around the county between their storage location and all the voting sites. So, their current balance in their Performance Management Bank is $65,408.15, so this falls within the dollar amounts that they have.
I make a motion, and we approve it?
I'll second it, but I have one question, just the process of purchasing this vehicle is in compliance with the Local Government Commission rules, buying it on state contract?
State.
Yes, I believe, it appears that it was purchased through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association contract price, so that's one that's similar to state contract, we can purchase directly from, it's already been negotiated.
Thanks, Craig.
And this, is this van, it's not going to be used every day, I don't think, it's going to get real busy around election time.
That's correct.
But at other times, will it be available to other county departments to use if needed?
I believe I can speak for Kathy and say, yes, she's always a team player, and she's, in the past, county departments have done a great job supporting the Board of Elections, sending staff out on election days as volunteers at her site, so I'm sure she would be happy to let anyone borrow it.
Great. I believe we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I guess I have a bladed eye there.
Thank you. All right, Mr. County Manager, do you have a report for the board today?
I have nothing.
All right, do we have any comments from the commissioners before we enter our closed session?
I have none, but I can't repeat them.
I make a motion, and we go into closed session.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so we're in closed session. So, we need to have a vote or a motion to reconvene.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to reconvene, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the board has considered and given instructions to the county attorney, so that matter is concluded. And so, we are, unless there's any other business before the board, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you for watching the Alamance County Commissioners Meeting. Meetings of the Commissioners Board occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners Chambers on the second floor of the County Office Building located at 124 West Elm Street in Graham. Typically, the first meeting of the month is held at 9:00 a.m., and the second meeting is held at 7:00 p.m. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the Commissioners' website at www.alamance-nc.com. You can watch the most recent meeting of the Commissioners on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month on Time Warner's Local Public Access Channel beginning at 10:00 p.m. You can also watch recordings of the most recent meeting and past meetings by going to our website at www.alamance-nc.com. Please visit our website for more information on watching Commissioner meetings online. For technical questions regarding this meeting's online or television broadcast, please contact our county webmaster at webmaster@alamance-nc.com. Please note that this address is for technical questions only. Questions or comments regarding the content of the Commissioners' meetings may be made to the Commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information on the Alamance County website at www.alamance-nc.com. Click on the link that says County Commissioners to visit the Commissioners' website, where you can learn about our Commissioners, read minutes of past meetings, access agendas, and find other information about our Board of Commissioners. You can also send mail correspondence to the County Commissioners by addressing it to the Alamance County Commissioners, 124 West Elm Street, Graham, North Carolina, 27253. Again, thank you for tuning in to the Alamance County Commissioners Meeting.